Planning and zoning commission.
Will the meeting of the planning and zoning commission for Wednesday, October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, please come to order. This evening's meeting will be a hybrid planning and zoning meeting hosted in person at the Nathaniel B. Green Community Center, Church Street, Guilford, Connecticut, Menno, Kentucky, room, second floor, as well as virtually by Zoom. During this meeting, our procedures will be as follows. One, when you first enter the Zoom meeting, you will be in a virtual waiting room until the meeting host admits you. Two, please be aware that your camera, if you have one, and your microphone will be muted by the meeting host when you enter the meeting. You can turn on your camera at any time so that you can be seen by others when and if you choose to. In order to run an efficient and orderly meeting in this virtual environment, unless stated otherwise with the meeting chairman during the meeting, the meeting host will keep everyone other than the commission members muted. You will still be able to hear everything said by the commission members, even if you're muted and or your camera is not on. There will be opportunity for public comment during public hearings, at which time public participants will be unmuted. The secretary will read the call of the meeting as published according to Governor Lamont's executive order. For during the public hearing, the applicant will be invited to present the application, explain to the commission and others present what is being requested. The meeting host will share all related documents on the screen as needed. In addition, all applications and supporting materials for each application on the agenda are available through the public meeting calendar page of the town website, www.gilfordct.gov, and also through a direct link on the planning and zoning page. Five comments of town agencies will be read for each application, if there are any, and there will be fine questions from commissioners. Six, there will then be an opportunity for clarifying questions from the audience. Please raise your hand to the Zoom platform and wait to be called on and unmuted. As this public hearing must be recorded, it is necessary for speakers to identify themselves each time they speak by stating their name and address. Seven, after all clarifying questions are exhausted, those who wish to speak in support of the application will be asked to go forward, state their name and address for the record and make a statement. Then those who wish to speak in opposition to the application will be asked to go forward, state their name and address for the record and make a statement. Seven, the applicant will then have an opportunity to address any questions or concerns raised by the public or commissioners. Nine, once the public hearing is closed, the applicant is free to leave or remain for the balance of the public hearing and the regular meeting, during which the commission will try to reach a decision on each application. Each applicant will be notified in writing as the decision of the commission as and has a right to appeal to spirit court if desired. Ten decisions to the meeting are available the day after the meeting by calling the planning and zoning department at two zero three four five three eight zero three nine or by emailing planning.zoning@gilfordct.gov after nine AM. Eleven, all actions taken on applications tonight by the commission will be a roll call. All commissioners and staff will identify themselves for the record before speaking. See this evening are the following members, who please identify themselves. Kevin Clark.
Here.
Bill Freeman.
Here.
Ted Sands.
Here.
Philip Johnson.
Here.
I don't think Sean Cosgrove.
I'm here. Thank you.
Frank DeAndrea.
Here.
And I'm Scott Edmund. Our alternates, the presidents this evening are Jason Marchi.
Here.
And Larry Rizzolo.
Here.
As we have a full seat tonight, then Jason and Larry, you guys are alternate, so.
Scott.
Yes, sir.
All right. Did I miss someone? Do we have six seated?
We have all seven seated.
Scott, Bill, Frank, Kevin, Ted, and myself.
Sean and Frank.
Forgot to count myself.
No problem. Staff present tonight are Jamie Stein, a town planner, acting assistant town planner, acting, you know, all the things.
On a women's show right now.
Good job, Jamie. This meeting will be recorded via Zoom platform and made available on the town website for viewing. The secretary will now read the legal notice.
Jimmy, can you put the legal notice up?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Notice hereby given that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission will hold an in-person hybrid public hearing on October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven thirty PM at the the Taylor B. Green Community Center, thirty-two Church Street, Guilford, uh, um, Menno Kentucky room, second floor. We also join this meeting via Zoom by using this link. Probably applications will be heard. Dean and Sarah Brown, sixty-one Donan Drive, map sixty-six, lot forty-five, zone or rate special permit application for an accessory structure greater than seven hundred and fifty square feet. Copies of the applications of these applications are available for inspection in the planning and zoning office and on the town's website, Guilford, ct.gov. At this hearing, persons may attend by either in person or via web connection and shall be heard. A written correspondence shall be submitted to planzoning@gilfordct.gov twenty-four hours prior to the meeting day. Documents are available at the planning and zoning office, styles two zero three four five three eight zero three nine for assistance. The Guilford, Connecticut, this twentieth day of September twenty twenty. What?
Twenty twenty-two.
Chairman, yes.
Thank you. I hear a motion to open the public hearing.
All moved.
Second.
Uh, someone by Bill Freeman, second by Philip Johnson, all three of you say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Our public hearing item today is the dean and Sarah Brown. Unfortunately, for anyone who has actually called in related to that item, it's been withdrawn. So we are just officially stating that for the record now. That's our. Do we have to do any motions on that, Jamie, or are we just memorializing it by stating it for the record?
Uh, we're just, thank you, Scott. Thank you for reading the legal notice into the record. I just wanted to confirm for all attendance that this application has been withdrawn. I don't think it requires any action by the commission.
If you do have questions related to this item, by all means, you can call the number that we stated at the beginning or send in your question to planningthatzoning@gilfordct.gov. Appreciate you checking in with us and feel free to stick around for the rest of the non-public hearing. That officially closes our public hearing for this evening. For regular hearings, deliberation of public hearing items, Jake's Cherry Street LLC, three ninety-seven Church Street, map seventy-four, lot three, zone I one, site plan and special permit for dental slash medical office. This has been continued from our last meeting. Commissioners, do you have, does anyone have anything they want to add to the discussion that we had on our last meeting?
I'll be before we vote.
Yeah.
Well, so when we make a motion, then we could have discussion.
Yep. So should we have someone make a motion?
Um, given the fact that one of them is significantly shorter than the other, which should get us one way or the other. Can I make a motion?
Yeah, I agree. The only thing is if that one of them doesn't carry, then we probably have to run the other one, right?
That's fine.
Okay.
But I mean, one is like five pages.
Sure.
One is page and bit. So, proposed motion, three nine seven Church Street, denial voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission deny a site plan and special permit for a nine thousand square foot dental slash medical office at three ninety-seven Church Street, map seventy-four, lot three, zone I one, filed by Jake's Cherry Street LLC, filed pursuant to sections two seven three dash twenty, comma, two seven three dash forty-eight D and table five of the zoning regulations. Our reasons are the following. First bullet point, the proposed use is a dental office medical building, which comes under the category of clinics and medical and dental in our use table. This use is a permitted use in the I one zoning district, subject to site plan approval, C-section two seventy-three dash twenty B and table five. Second bullet point, the applicant has applied for a special permit here because it proposes an impervious surface limit of sixty-two point four percent. Section two seven three dash four, the eight of our regulations entitled impervious surfaces provides for an impervious surface limit of forty percent in the I one zoning district, but allows this limit to be increased by special permit if the applicant has submitted a stormwater management plan as provided in section two seventy-three dash seventy-five S, and the commission finds that the special permit criteria have been satisfied in the proposed section of two seventy-three dash forty-eight will be better served by allowing a greater percentage of impervious surface. Third bullet point, we cannot find that the purposes of section two seventy-three dash forty-eight will be better served by allowing an impervious surface limit higher than forty percent limit allowed for uses in an I one zoning district under our regulations. Fourth bullet point, we find the certain, we find that certain of the special permit standards in section two seventy-three dash eighty have not been satisfied by the application in particular. One, section two seventy-three dash eighty A, we find that the location and the size and use of the building are not in harmony and conform to the appropriate and orderly development of the town and neighborhood. In particular, the need for an impervious surface limit higher than forty percent is driven by the size of the building and required parking on the site. The applicant could satisfy the forty percent limit by reducing the size of the building or by using pervious pavers in the construction of the parking lot. Two, section two seventy-three dash eighty D, we find the lot on which the use is to be established is not sufficient in size and dimension to permit the conduct of the use and construction and maintenance of building structures and facilities in a manner that will not be detrimental to the neighborhood or adjacent lots. The commission incorporates herein the reasons stated in subsection one above. In addition, we find the size and scope of the proposed site work may jeopardize the tree line shared with the property to the south.
Second.
Second.
Kevin Clark, thank you. Discussion.
Just please, kind.
I said discussion. Just, did you have something?
Yeah, I, I.
Go ahead, Mr. Freeman.
It's Bill here. I disagree with several of the facts that are stated there. I think that it does fit into the size and scope of the buildings that surround it. I think it was designed well. The tree situation was way overstated. I don't even think it was in our purview, to be honest, and it shouldn't have been part of the discussion. But it was, and they made accommodations to that, and then subsequently are going to make sure that the trees are well protected as best they can. I really think that that would improve the site area in general. I drove by it a couple of times. It's certainly not an attractive area. And I think it would be very beneficial for the Guilford Art Center. I know they're very encouraged by the advent of that being built there, as for overflow parking and such things. So I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Uh, Scott.
Yes, sir. Miss Cosgrove.
Yeah, so the, you know, the regulations state that the the limit is forty percent of an impervious service in this zone for this purpose. And, you know, my, my thoughts are that this, these regulations were put in place. I'm not sure how many years ago, but many years before we have become aware of the fact that we should expect to experience, you know, more severe storms with more rain associated with them. And I think that the forty percent is entirely reasonable. I, I don't, I don't, I, I do not. I would love to see this site improved and developed, but I am concerned about the impervious surface aspect of this application. And, and, you know, I, I'm a little bit, I'm not sure how to say this. You know, if you start a negotiating position with something that's unreasonable and then you make, you know, accommodations to get closer to where the relations state you should be, and you make the efforts. The fact that you make the efforts is great, but the relations of regulations.
Thanks. Any comments?
Um, I would make a comment that we're not talking about a percent or two over the forty percent. We're increasing the impervious surface limits by more than fifty percent. And we go from a forty percent limit to sixty-two point four. That's not, that's a pretty big delta between what what's allowed and what they're asking for. And I, I mean, I certainly appreciate the desire to maximize the size and revenue generating possibilities of a building there. But I would side with Sean that I think there's probably a reason why there's a forty percent limit and that, again, I think we've talked about precedent setting stuff, and it's not necessarily, but I think if we do this for this property, it, it, it at least sets the model for, should we do it for others? And I, I just think it's a, a significant overdevelopment of a very small lot.
Thanks. Um, I'll go ahead and jump in just with my comments. You know, there, I'll basically repeat everything from last meeting. I feel like in looking at this and looking at the surrounding areas, it feels to me like this building fits. It feels like the pervious service fits. It feels to me like the, the, this small, the fact that this is a small lot in this area is what makes this application unique and what for me makes this application worthy of having a voting for the waiver to go over forty percent. And I agree, I echo Mr. Freeman's comments as well, related to, you know, how the trees, you know, wasn't part of our purview on this, but I, I really appreciated the applicants going kind of above me on as well as agreeing to a tree protection plan in the event that that was needed. Sean, did you have a comment? Or a question?
I just, I would like to be more, you feel, you, you were more specific after I kind of tried to interject.
Yeah, it's in my, in, in my opinion, in my judgment, it seems to me like this is, this is a because of how small this lot is compared to all the lots around it, all the lots that are in the same zone, same I industrial zone as the lots around it. I feel like this, I believe that this lot is at a disadvantage, for lack of a better word. I know that Philip pointed out early on that this is probably should have been a case for ZBA and, and this is the type of language that ZBA uses all the time, is that it's, is this a hardship or not? But the factor, the fact falls on, in this case, it falls on us to, to make that determination. And in my estimation, this law, the, the waiver for the impervious services is, um, I think this is the type of situation that that's for. And I think that's what sets this application apart. I think personally, that's why that this doesn't set a precedent for other lots. There's going to be plenty of other, I feel there's plenty of other lots that are larger and would not, you know, need to jump into such a high percentage of impervious. That's just where I stand on it. I saw both hands from Kevin. Go ahead, Kevin.
Um, couple of things. So Scott, you said something about how it's because the lot is tiny, it was at a disadvantage.
Yep.
Um, so, so the lot was purchased by the owner, the current owner, probably knowing it was at a disadvantage, still purchased it anyway. So by allowing a fifty percent increase in impervious surface, are we supposed to let him off the hook for what potentially could be construed as maybe a bad business decision?
No.
Can we be clear? It's not an increase of fifty percent. It's.
Absolutely is. Yep.
No, it's an increase, so it's allowable of forty.
Right.
They're doing sixty-two, eighty would be a fifty percent.
What's fifty percent of forty, Frank?
Twenty.
So you add twenty on.
Right.
And you get to sixty, and we're at sixty-two and a half. So it's a fifty percent increase.
Increase of what?
Increase in the allowable impervious surface area.
I'm not seeing it that way.
Well, that's, that, that, it's, that's the math. I mean, help me out, someone.
That's, that's the way I.
It is the math.
So, so to answer Kevin's question, direct question was, I, it's, they have put forth an application that is, and, and they bought the land, they put forth an application that's based fully within the rules and regs of our regulations. Um, and we, I mean, the, with a waiver is in there. They did a site, they did a special permit as opposed to doing a site plan because they wanted to get a certain size for the building to, you know, to do what they needed to do in that building. Our, our site engineer has approved their, their, their system, you know, kind of in reference to Sean's comments. The system has been approved up to a hundred year storm. I mean, if it, it, it meets all the requirements to be able to get this waiver.
But I think the, the waiver was kind of like a fingers crossed, wishful thinking on their part that we would let, let them what to say better. I mean, lack of a better way to overdevelop the site. I, I, two, I had two more points. And this gets, because I agree, I agree with both Phil and Sean on this. I'm not going to repeat what they said or what I said at the last meeting, but as far as maybe possible reasonable and prudent alternatives, I don't think the shared parking lot with a neighbor avenue was necessarily explored very well. That was brought up by Jamie at the last meeting with some of the material that she sent us. I didn't hear that, actually. That idea was explored at all. I mean, if they could share some of the neighbors' parking, that would mitigate the need for as much parking as they're asking for, reducing, potentially reducing the impervious surface. And also too, I'm wondering if a more prudent waiver to ask for would have been the reduced parking spaces for the site. I probably would be more on board with something like that than I would with the waiver that they're currently asking for. So I, I think there's, there was other avenues that they could have explored to maybe avoid the sixty-two point four percent. And that's it. Thank, thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Sands.
Um, well, I think there are a couple of issues here. Uh, I too feel that this is a small lot that they're trying to build out almost to the, you know, to the absolute limit. And I personally am concerned about the, the tree line. I went out and I looked at these trees. They're, they're big, healthy trees that improve the look of the whole area. I, I think there's probably a way to work with them to, to protect the trees. The fact that they're asking for a fifty percent increase over the allowed impervious surface. I, you know, the, the language of the regulation says that if they come up with an alternative way of dealing with the storm water, that we need to consider that. And as Scott pointed out, the, the town engineers say that the system that they're proposing, which is not free, would allow them to deal with a hundred year storm. So I, I don't think that from a precedent setting point of view, the fact that we're willing to go from forty to sixty is, I, the regs say if you can, if you can work it out and get it approved, then that's at the discretion of the commission. So I would be in favor of trying to work with, with the applicant to, um, I, I don't disagree that, that they're, they're trying to develop this rather small parcel to the max. And I think the idea of trying to share parking with the art center is a worthy thing to, to look at. But I, you know, I don't like the idea that we're saying if it's over forty percent, you're, you know, you're out of luck. That's not what the regs say.
Um, Frank, you have.
No, I just, Phil, help me. Do help me because I keep coming up with the, like, the forty-three percent, and I know I'm screwing something up. I know it. So.
So if it was forty percent, a hundred percent increase would make it eighty percent. It's basically double. So if it's only going up to sixty, it's a fifty percent increase.
Because when I was doing the square footage and the lot size, I kept coming up forty-three percent, forty-three percent. I was just trying to see where that seven I'm missing. But I'm sure you guys are right because math was never my strong suit.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't pull on your leg, Frank, because I know what the implications.
And the building.
Yep. Bill, one last comment, Bill.
Sure. I, I appreciate that you guys are worried about precedent, but I don't think, I think we always have the, the purview of deciding what is so and what isn't so. So whether someone's coming for one percent or eighty percent, which I guess is what the maximum is written, it's always a question of whether it's, you know, an appropriate amount. So I think to penalize somebody because they figured out how to get the water to work and get the design to work, and they're working with the neighbor and they're helping the other neighbor. And for us to just say, well, it's going to create a precedent, and why are they trying to maximize it? And he already bought it. Well, I don't even know if he bought it. Most people do, do things where they have an agreement where if they don't get an approval, they don't buy it. So I really don't under, I don't think that, personally, I don't think that's what we're supposed to think about these things. We're supposed to look at the regulation, see if it fits and, and make our judgments based on that. And you can have personal opinions, obviously, we all do, about whether you think it's a good fit for the place or what have you. But I think we really need to focus on whether the applicant has read the regulations and applied what they read judiciously, which in this case, I think they have over and above with the tree guy. So that's basically my, where I'm falling.
Thanks, Bill. In fairness, part of this being a special permit is that we're fully within a, a reason to actually deny is because it doesn't fit. So in fairness, that is a, that's a viable opinion as well.
Absolutely.
Um, I think that's, we've heard from everybody. The, uh, what's it called?
The motion was a denial.
The motion on the table is a denial. So a vote of yes is to deny, vote of no is to not deny, and then we would go through a different process. Do roll call vote. Kevin Clark?
Yes.
Phil Freeman?
No.
Ted Sands?
No.
Philip Johnson?
Uh, yes, deny.
Sean Cosgrove?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
No.
And I will know. The motion does not carry, sort of by around a four to three. Um, Frank, can I ask you to run through a very long motion, please?
Yep. If you get winded, I'll pitch in.
All right. So voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a site plan and special permit for a nine thousand square foot dental medical office at three ninety-seven Church Street, map seventy-four, lot three, zone I one, filled, filed by Jake Sherry Street LLC, filed pursuant to section two seventy-three dash twenty, two seventy-three dash forty-eight D and table five of the zoning regulations. The submitted and approved plans include an A-two class zoning location survey by PHI Engineering LLC for Gale S. Kowalski, three ninety-seven Church Street, parcel number zero seven four zero zero three, Guilford, Connecticut, dated three nineteen, two thousand and twenty-one, and certified by Michael D. Phipps, P E on seven nineteen, two thousand and twenty-two, one sheet, a stormwater operation and maintenance plan report for three ninety-seven Church Street, Guilford, Connecticut, prepared for Dr. Joseph Tartagna, M.D. by Kurt Lowenstein, P E of Land Tech Engineering, dated September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, six pages. A stormwater management report for three ninety-seven Church Street, Guilford, Connecticut, by Kurt Lowenstein, P E of Land Tech Engineering, dated November fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, and revised on September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Is that right? A hundred and eighteen pages. Construction site development plan for three ninety-seven Church Street, Guilford, Connecticut, prepared for Dr. Joseph Tartagna, M.D. by Land Tech Engineering, and dated November fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, and revised on September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, nine sheets. This application is approved with the following conditions. One, the applicant shall file with the town clerk an original copy of a With the town clerk, an original copy of a special permit approval. To be provided to the, by the planning and zoning department and shall furnish written evidence to the planning and zoning department that the document has been so recorded prior to planning and zoning sign off for building permits. Pursuant to the state statute, the site plan and associated site improvements, as well as the soil erosion sedimentation control plan. The approval is valid for a period of five years following the date of the decision until. October nineteenth, twenty twenty-seven, upon petition of the applicant. The commission may at its discretion grant extensions totaling no more than an additional five years to complete all the work. Conducted to the original approved, connected to the original approval. Three, a final digital copy, single file PDF and one printed hard copy. Of the full site drawing plan shall be submitted to the planning and zoning department prior to the zoning enforcement officer's review and sign off of the building permits. Four, the town of Guilford zoning enforcement officer shall be notified. To inspect the sedimentation erosion control measures prior to any site work. Soil erosion sedimentation control measure shall be maintained until vegetation is established or suitable materials installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement officer. Five, a final as-built survey shall be submitted for all proposed structures, driveways, parking areas, stormwater systems and other improvements. As specified before, the certificate of occupancy approval by the zoning enforcement officer. Six, details of the easement between three ninety-seven Church Street and the Guilford Art Center shall be clearly set forth on the final site plan. Seven, the existing driveway open at Route seventy-seven, that is to be utilized for shared access shall be repaved. Eight, a tree protection plan for the shared tree line between three ninety-seven and three eighty-five Church Street shall be created. By a licensed arborist and submitted in writing to the zoning enforcement officer prior to sign off on building permits. The plan, which shall be separate and apart, but in conformance with and amplify the notes provided on sheet C dash three. Of a drawing submitted by Land Tech, quote, site improvements for a proposed dental office building, tree protection. And S E, S C plan, end quote, prepared for Joseph Tartagna. M.D. three ninety-seven Church Street Guilford, Connecticut, date eleven four twenty twenty-one. Nine, in the event that the landscaping and other site improvements are not complete prior to planning and zoning sign off for certificate of occupancy. A bond should be provided to the planning and zoning. Department in the amount equal to the estimated cost of the remaining approved landscape plan. Ten, prior to planning and zoning sign off for a certificate of occupancy, the installation of the stormwater system shall be inspected and certified by a licensed engineer, engineer. And the installation is in compliance with the plans and design for the intent for the project. Eleven, to ensure future compliance of stormwater management system in accordance to section two seventy-three dash seventy-five F of the zoning code, the applicant shall, A. Prepare a written maintenance and operation manual for all the stormwater management systems located at the subject site. The manual should provide provisions for yearly inspection, maintenance of stormwater system, yearly reports to the town engineer. The maintenance schedule should include but not limited to weekly, monthly, quarterly inspections of the property for litter monitoring. Any outside storage areas, monitoring of the catch basins, oil. Particle separators, underground stormwater systems, the removal of accumulated material. Non-native invasive species in the swales and the energy dissipator. The maintenance plan shall require that the stormwater management plan will be reviewed annually and that any changes to the plan will require the approval of the town engineer. B, an as-built. Drawing of the completed stormwater system shall be prepared in accordance with section two seventy-three dash seventy-five F stormwater. Management subsection six, construction of the town of Guilford zoning code. C, the applicant shall file a maintenance covenant on the land records as required by section two seventy-three. Dash seventy-five F stormwater management subsection seven. Maintenance covenants of the town of Guilford zoning code. Twelve, the applicant shall provide to the design review committee details regarding the roof color. The color material detailing the building, including the glazing. A building cross-section, information about whether the glass will be clear or colored. And shall consider modification of any of these details based on the comments of the design review committee. Thirteen, a landscape maintenance bond shall be provided prior to zoning sign off. A certificate of occupancy in accordance with section two seventy-three dash ninety-seven dot B. Uh, three F seven of the regulations. This application is approved based upon a finding that it conforms with the town of Guilford zoning code without limiting the foregoing. The commission finds that. The proposed use is a dental medical office building, which comes under the category of clinics, medical and dental in our use table. This is a permitted use in the I one zone zoning district, subject to site plan approval, see section two seventy-three dash twenty B and table five. The applicant has applied for a special permit here because it proposes an impervious surface limit of sixty-two point four percent. Section two seventy-three dash forty-eight of our regulations entitled impervious surfaces. Provisions for an impervious limit of forty percent in the I one zone district, but allows this limit to be increased by a special permit. If the applicant has submitted a stormwater management plan as provided. In section two seventy-three dash seventy-five F and the commission finds that the special permit criteria. Have been satisfied and that the purpose, the purposes of section two seventy-three dash forty-eight. Will be better served by allowing a greater percentage of impervious surface. The commission finds that the purposes subs of the section two seventy-three dash forty-eight. Have been satisfied by this application. As stated in two seventy-three dash forty-eight A. The purpose of the section, quote, is to protect the surface and groundwater resources of the town, end quote. The applicant's engineer, Land Tech, has prepared a stormwater management report. November fourth, twenty twenty-one, revised on September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. And a stormwater operations and maintenance plan dated September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two that have been. Presented to the commission have been reviewed by the town engineer. Our town engineer has found that these plans are consistent with the Connecticut Stormwater Quality Manual. And meet the criteria outlined in the drainage sections of our zoning regulations. We agree with these findings. We find that the purpose of section two seventy-three dash forty-eight, i.e. the protection of the surface and groundwater resources of the town. Will be met by the implementation of these plans. We also find that the special permit standards in section two seventy-three dash eighty have been satisfied by the application. In particular, we find one that the use medical office clinic is permitted as of right in the industrial district. And with the proper stormwater management measures in place, we find that the location type, character and size and use and building is in harmony with. And conform to the appropriate development of the town and the neighborhood. We acknowledge the concerns from the abutting property owner about possible damage to the tree line and vegetation. On the border of the property, but we have created the testimony of the applicants, credited the testimony of the applicant's arborist. And find that the applicant's plans as revived are revised are not reasonably likely to result in any damage to the tree line. Two, we find that there will be adequate access to the property and building for fire protection purposes. Three, we find that the streets serving the proposed use and buildings are adequate to carry prospective traffic. And that it's no undue traffic hazard or congested will be created. Four, we find that with the revisions made by the applicant in the stormwater management controls provided, the lot. Is sufficient in size and dimension for the use in buildings in a manner that will not be detrimental to the neighborhood and the adjacent lots. Five, we acknowledge the review in the comments of the design review committee and find that the architectural design and style of the buildings. Do not conflict with the design and style of the adjacent properties. Six, we find that the use will not have a significant adverse effect on the historic property or historic district. This special, this special permit shall be effective on October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two and upon filing with the town clerk.
Thank you very much. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sands. Um, discussion is, is there any points through that? I think four pages, five pages that was read. Uh, that anyone wants to talk about the details of change wording? Or, or discuss wording? All right, seeing none, um. We'll move to votes. So again, this is, uh, we're voting to. Bruce, so yes, vote is approval, uh, no vote is to not approve. Kevin Clark?
No.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
Sands?
Yes.
Philip Johnson?
No.
Sean Cosgrove?
No.
Frank D'Andrea?
Yes.
And I will, yes. Motion carries four to three. Thank you everyone for all of your time. And careful deliberation on this one. We'll move to, uh, let's see, we don't have any pending applications. Uh, new application, town of Guilford Fire Department, three ninety Church Street, CT Route seven. Map seventy-four, lot two, zone I one. Site plan application for the construction of a three thousand two hundred forty square foot apparatus bay addition. To the existing fire department building at the town of Guilford Public Safety Complex. Receive and take action today and eighteen twenty twenty-two. With our department to. Discuss. Michael, I, I'm not sure who he wants to start, um.
I could start, uh, Mike or Ryan want to start from, uh, the engineering side?
Yeah, I can start. That's okay. Um, I'm Ryan Haley. I'm an architect with Silver Petrocelli and Associates in Hampton. I'm joined by Mike Shove from Summer Hill Civil Engineers and also Assistant Chief Mike Shove from the Guilford Fire Department. Um, we're here with an application for a thirty-two hundred square foot, um, addition to the apparatus bay. Of the, uh, existing Guilford Fire Department. Uh, this will consist of two double stacked, uh, pull-through bays. Um. Materials of the building would match the existing building with the brick on the main, uh, side, the faces of the street. Um, with, uh, insulated metal wall panels on the north and west side of the building. Uh, we would, uh, continue the existing concrete water table around the building. Uh, the building would, uh, have a gable roof with the slope to match the existing. Um. Stereo lighting would be full cutoff. It would be the same style and location as, uh, currently on the existing building. Uh. Overhead doors on the main side would match the existing, uh, with some insulated metal panels, uh, in lieu of additional. Um, in lieu of full glazing. As we have two rows of, uh, glazing instead of a full glazing with insulated panels on the balance of the doors. Uh, the overhead doors on the opposite side of the building, um, on the west side. The rear of the building would be, uh, standard insulated, um, sectional overhead doors. Um. That's pretty much all I have, um. Uh, it is, what you see is what you got there.
Thanks. We have a, um. We have a letter from our town, uh, environmental planner, Kevin McGee. Uh, who have we not heard from yet? Uh, Kevin Clark, would you mind reading? The memo from Kevin McGee?
Not at all. October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two to Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission from Kevin McGee, environmental planner, RE, site plan, town of Guilford. Three ninety Church Street, Guilford, Connecticut, O six four three seven, assessor, map seventy-four, lot two. The town of Guilford is proposing to construct, in addition to the existing firehouse. The proposed work is being conducted within an existing impervious area of the property. All the work is located outside of the inlet wetlands commissioned hundred foot upland review area to the West River and associated wetlands. The plans for the project have sedimentation and erosion control consisting of geotextile sediment traps. Be installed under the catch basin grates and curb inlet barriers. In order to make sure that the natural resources are protected, I recommend the following conditions of approval. One, town of Guilford zoning enforcement officer shall be notified to inspect the sedimentation and erosion control measures prior to any worksite. Soil stockpiles should be contained by silt fencing, hay bales or straw wattle barrier. Soil erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be maintained until vegetation is established. Or suitable material is installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement officer. Two, the site contractor shall inspect the erosion control measures at least once a week. And after a rainfall amount of zero point five inches of rain or greater, as noted on the submitted plans.
Thanks, um. Mr. Haley, also, uh, Mike from Summer Hill. Is everyone all right with these stipulations from Kevin McGee?
Yeah, um, yes, Mr. Chairman, would you, um, would you like to go over the, the site improvements? They're, they're kind of limited, but I can show you, uh.
Yes, please. I, I was curious, uh, I know the building is going to be on top of, of, of impervious services that are already there, but I was wondering if. All of your construction activities are going to be on impervious or if there are some that are going to be off of that?
Yeah, I can, I can show you that. Can I, um, may I share my screen?
Yes.
So, um, can the commission see my screen now?
Yes.
Um, so just for the record, I'm. Licensed professional engineer and land surveyor with Summer Hill. Um, engineers and land surveyors in Madison. Is the, this is just for context. You're all familiar with the site. This is just the town's G I S that I have up on the screen. Uh, ninety-five on the bottom of the screen and. Upstate Route seventy-seven Church Street, um, going, going north and south, up and down the screen. Um, this is the existing fire department building. Uh, I will try to see how far I can zoom in here. So the addition goes on this northern end of the building. And it looks like that's as far as I can zoom in. See that there's some parking here today. At the end of the building and there's these two bump outs. Paver bump outs and there's, you can't really see it, but there's a, um, can't see well. But there's a relatively narrow sidewalk also along this north. Elevation of the, uh, of the building. Um, so the.
I'm sorry, Michael, one second. Yeah, thank you, Jamie. You're all set, Michael. Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Um. So the addition is, um, this is kind of a good, you know, good picture to look at, a, a photo to look at because it. Um, you know, the addition is, is essentially, um, replacing. Impervious surface comprised of pavement. Little bit of sidewalk and these, uh, paver bump outs with the building addition. Uh. The only, and I'll, I'll, I'll show you on the site plan in, in a little more detail, but the, the other. Main site improvement that we're going to make is because this addition will extend out. From the existing north end of the building. We have to move this island, uh, north. To still have enough room to get out of the, for the apparatus to get. Um, out of the new addition bays and apparatus and other vehicles to get around the addition. So, um, I will. Let me see if you, um, did you, do you now see the plan set? Um.
Right, no, yeah, no.
Okay, so I'll, uh, I'll stop sharing.
Yeah.
And I'll re-share. I think I can make this work. Um. How about now?
Yes.
Page one.
Yep, okay, so, um. I should, in case any of you, um, picked up on this, I should fess up. Um, Jamie was. Nice to meet you today and tell me that apparently I was looking for approval. From the town of Madison's planning and zoning. So, uh. I will change that. I don't, I don't think we need their approval. Um, I will fix that. Um. So, uh. This is the site plan. Um. So north is, uh, to the right in, in this view. And this is, I can zoom in a little more. Um, existing building on the left. The sidewalk I was talking about and the bump outs. Um, hopefully you can see those under this gray shading. And the gray, the gray rectangle is the addition, the apparatus bay addition. Um, new sidewalk on the north, along the north elevation. Uh, concrete apron along. Garage bay doors of some new colors. That match the existing concrete bollards that are there on the site today. And this is the island, um, I was talking about that we will. You can see the light, the light lines. This is the existing grass island. Um, where you can see we're kind of repeating its shape. And just shifting it north to the right. Um, in order to, in order to have enough room from this corner of the apparatus bay. To this curb line of this island. Um, so again, it's, it's really, um. The, the, we're, we're replacing, you know, impervious surface for a different type of impervious surface. In addition to shifting the islands, we have to locate one existing parking. Uh, which is, the existing one is here today. We just have to shift it over. There's a hydrant in this island that we will shift over. And we will convert an existing catch basin to a manhole. And put a new catch basin here. Um, the only other, the, the other. Kind of big thing that we're going to do is. These outside, um. Uh, structures today. Will be removed and we will, um, install a, a new, um. Oil grid separator and holding tank for the floor drain system. That's, that's within the garage, existing, the existing building as well as will be in the new apparatus spec. So I think, um, so all the. Um. As Kevin said, in his, uh, Kevin McGee said, letter, there's no. The blue, this blue dash line is the one hundred foot upland area. The blue, this blue dash line is the one hundred foot upland area. From the closest inland wetland boundary. So you can see there's no, there's no activity within one hundred feet. The training facility was not. That aerial image that I showed you, but this is the new facility that the commission approved about a year ago. This rectangle, this is the the fire department's training structure that's there today. I think, I think that's pretty much, I'd be, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
So as far as like soil and whatnot, is that just all getting taken directly off site? Is there anything that's going to be? Like, in terms of stockpiles that Kevin McGee likes to talk about, are those going to be in certain area?
Um, there really, there really wouldn't be any stockpiled material in this case. You can, you can imagine. When they do the demolition, when they saw cut the pavement. And break it up, they'll 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 load it into a truck and haul it off site. Sidewalk and these bump outs and when they excavate for the footing. You know, the 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 foundational walls and footings for this. Building, they, you know, the the there's going to be an excess of materials, so it'll. Contractor won't want to handle it twice. I I expect it'll go directly into trucks and and removed from the site.
Any other questions from commissioners? Bill Freeman?
Is it a a pass through system where the truck drives in one side and not the other? Is that how that's designed?
You know, I, I actually can't remember. We'd have to, Orion would go off the top of it.
Yeah, they would enter from the west side of the building and they could pull straight through to the east side.
Philip Johnson, I think you had a question. They were muted last I saw. Any other questions from commissioners? All right. Jamie, would you mind taking, I'm sorry, Mr. Michael, would you mind taking down the sharing? Thank you very much. All right, there's a proposed motion. We haven't heard from. Mr. Sands, would you like to make a motion?
Yes. Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a site plan application from the town of Guilford Fire Department. Three ninety Church Street, Connecticut, Route seventy-seven. Map seventy-four, lot two, zone I one. Site plan application for the construction of a. Three thousand two hundred and forty square foot apparatus bay addition to the existing fire department building. At the town of Guilford Public Safety Complex. The submitted and approved plans include. Fire Department Apparatus Bay Expansion, three ninety Church Street. Pre and con, Route seventy-seven, closed pre and. Guilford, Connecticut, prepared by Silver Petrosalian Associates and Summer Hill Engineers dated October. Twenty twenty-two, seven sheets. The applicant is approved, the application is approved with the following conditions. One, a final digital copy of the full approved plan shall set. Shall be submitted to the zoning enforcement officer prior to signing off on building permits. Two, the zoning enforcement officer shall be notified to inspect. The sedimentation and erosion control measures. Soil stocks, stockpiles shall be. Contained by silt fencing and or. Hay bales. Soil erosion and sedimentation control measures should be maintained until vegetation is established. Or suitable material is installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement officer. Three, the site contractor shall inspect the erosion control measures at least once a weekend. And after a rainfall amount of zero point five inches or greater, as noted on the submitted plans. This application is approved based on a finding that it conforms with the town of Guilford's zoning code.
Do your second. Mr. Freeman, thank you. Any discussion? I'll do a real call votes. Kevin Clark?
In favor?
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
Ted Sands?
Yes.
Philip Johnson? Still muted?
Yes.
Thank you. John Cosgrove?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Yes.
And I will, yes, motion carries unanimously. Good luck.
Thank. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we will move on to. Other new applications that we need to set public hearings for. William and Michael, William and Michelle Gilson, Two Heart Landing Map, one oh six lot eighteen dash three zone R eight. Special permit application for accessory dwelling unit. Public hearing set for, oh, we've already set these, Jamie? Or do we need to?
Thank you, Scott. I prefer if you all voted to receive a second.
Sure, so propose the public hearing set for eleven to twenty twenty-two. And then Charles Kermey, three sixteen Little Meadow Road. Map eighty-six lot two zone R five, special permit application for earth removal operation. Section two seventy-three dash sixty-six of the Guilford zoning regulations, public hearing set for eleven to twenty twenty-two.
So hope.
Thank you, Philip. Any second?
Second.
Thank you, Frank. All in favor? I, motion carries unanimously. All right, other business zoning, do we want to go over anything else, Jamie, before we jump into zoning rewrites?
No, sir.
All right, zoning regulations with Mr. Glenn Chalder. Thank you for taking, waiting on us, Glenn. Appreciate it. Good to see you again.
Nice to be here. Thank you.
Jamie, do you want to take it away? Introductions of what we're going to go over today?
Yeah, so thank you, thank you, Glenn, for joining us. This is a great moment in our. Schedule to adoption of our proposed zoning regulations. Now that Glenn is back into the fold. That means we're ready to get this over the finish line. So Glenn will be working with me and Heather working with me. On a really a weekly basis to try to get our rigs to be able to be voted on next March. So I asked Glenn to join this meeting and give a bit of a recap. To some of the decisions that were made with the former planning and zoning department. Around the business districts and the consolidation of our business districts. If you remember when we held a public information meeting back in August, that was. I exhaustedly walked through those comparative newspapers of all the twenty-two business districts. And some of the overarching. Things that we saw were really in agreement that consolidation. Of our twenty-two business districts until about eleven was a good move. There were just some questions around the consistency of how we permit uses. Specifically in relation to, you know, how we permit a particular use. On the west side of Route one versus how we permit the same use on the east side of Route one and just thinking about. Permitting those similar uses. And then lastly, I think there was an overarching kind of movement toward. Special permit, and so permitting used to be a special permit when some of them were in the past site plan. So I just wanted Glenn to take some time this evening to walk through some of the history of how those. Zones were consolidated. And then also I'm hoping that Glenn can walk us through the proposed planned development district. That we have in use on regulation. So with that, I'll hand it over to.
Great, Jamie, thank you very much. I'm going to share my screen here just real quick. Kind of put together a PowerPoint presentation just to. Share information with the commission and other people in attendance here this evening. So as Jamie indicated, two things that I'm ready to talk with you about tonight are both the business zones and then all the land development district. For all. As we were working on the regulations, we noticed that there were more than twenty business zones in some sections of roadway. There were. Quite a few zoning districts in a very small area. The conversations that were had with George and Aaron at the time was whether or not. The zoning districts that had evolved over time reflected the. Directions that the commission wanted to go in, whether it might be possible to create situations or. Different areas that had consistent zoning regulations in effect. George took the lead in reviewing the different zoning districts that Guilford had. And through that effort, did twenty-plus zones that were are in existence today in your current zoning configuration. Got changed to about eleven new zoning districts. For consideration and review by the commission. My understanding, I wasn't at the meeting, but George sort of shared this concept of how the zoning districts would be created and combined with the commission. And commission was interested in proceeding. So the actual changes in the zoning districts are reflected on the third map here. So again, there's a three map set which is available on the town's website. The current zoning districts, the proposed zoning districts, and which zones are in fact. Being changed from sort of one category to another, if you will. As part of this work overall, as you can imagine, we found some situations where. There were differences between some of the zoning districts that were being combined. Though the general approach that we took in terms of preparing the proposed regulations. Was that if. Our goal is not to make uses non-conforming. So if a use was permitted in one of the districts. That became permitted in all of the districts that were being combined into the new district. The type of approval was generally defaulted to the most restrictive. Though. We weren't sure what the commission's reaction was going to be to the zone combinations. And rather than complicate matters by putting things into site plan approval when they had been special permit. We defaulted the other way, instead of they were special permit in any one of the zoning districts. Then it became special permit in all of the zoning districts. And so I think that's a kind of a fundamental question that the commission may want to talk about a little bit. In addition, we didn't want to make people non-conforming in terms of lot size or area or setbacks. So generally speaking, the area dimensional standards defaulted to the. Most lenient standard, though a setback might have become a little bit less than it had been because it was lower in one of the other districts. Or the minimum lot size requirement might not have been as large, et cetera. And other provisions in the regulations, there are some zoning districts that had limitations on building sizes or. You know, maximum amount of square footage and those provisions were carried over as well. So the basic approach here was to look at how to combine the business districts to get the commission's feedback. And then to move forward. And I I think that. That situation, this slide here, for example, is from our public meeting back in January. So we haven't really made any substantive changes since January. And we're looking for guidance from the commission as how to proceed with regard to these particular issues overall. Thoughts or questions from the commission on? On the business zones and the different approaches?
Yeah, well, Jamie had, we also had a. Public hearing as well where we discussed one over these that you weren't at. And I think there was a fair amount of comments from the public on each, you know, some of these zones and Jamie took down a lot of notes. So I think that. That was helpful as well. Jamie, did you? I think it'd probably be easiest if we just go piece by piece, Jamie, on the items that you wanted to discuss.
Sure, I'm happy to do that. I think as Glenn stated. You know, the the idea to go with the more conservative way of permitting, you know, I'd like for the commissioners. To weigh in on that, you know, that that we're comfortable with that or we are not comfortable with that. I think that. You know, we have received, I think, written comments from one property owner regarding. The costs that are incurred in that type of land use procedure. So I just want the. Commission to be aware that we have received feedback regarding the additional cost of going. For a special permit versus a site plan.
So to summarize, to summarize for everyone to start the discussion, the basic question is, at what point? What, or how do we decide what the point is where we should do a special permit as opposed to doing a site plan? And and is there a line that then is an easy kind of. Deciding factor then for us to go through the regulations and and kind of update them so that certain things are site planned versus. A special permit. There's there's opinions on both sides out there. There's opinions out there that a. That a special permit is very onerous and costly. There's other opinions out there that were stated in the same meeting that they thought the special permit was not as onerous and. So there's, from what we saw in the meeting, it was a pretty split in terms of public opinion on that. I think I'd ask Glenn if you, from your experience with other towns. Has there been some sort of dividing line that's been decided or or has it been mostly just case by case basis? How? Is there any, any knowledge that you can impart us from other towns?
Great question, Scott. I mean, I think the the zoning DNA of every town evolves over time. Based on the unique circumstances of situations in the municipality. I think it is somewhat unique for a municipality of Guilford size to have twenty-plus business zones. And I think that's where the conversation started is that. You know, in very small sections, for example, of Route one, there might have been four different zoning districts. So all of us, you know, could be butters. And you could do things that I couldn't, and I could do things that you couldn't. And and so we were looking at ways to try to address that scenario. And this now starts to raise the question of how do we address those scenarios? I think the presumption we made was when the commission established which uses were going to be regulated by special permit, either historically before. They probably had a valid reason for doing so. And so we didn't want to just go ahead and change that inadvertently without the commission being aware of that as a conscious choice. So we defaulted in the other direction. We had to make a call one way or another as to what might be permitted. And how it might be done. So if the commission. Felted they wanted to. Go in a more permissive direction, we might default to site plans versus special permits. Or segregate which ones really do in fact need special permits for whatever reason in those sorts of zoning districts. So I think. We were exploring how the the different districts could be combined. And I think the decisions which remain, I don't think there is. Any great advice that I can give you, Scott, in terms of precedent or examples from other communities? It's a little bit of case by case in terms of, you know, should we be requiring special permits for blank? In this area of Guilford or not?
Okay, so.
Can I just make a comment? I I just, I just think. You know, combining districts should should be consistent with long-term planning of the town and. You know, I I just. Think that, you know, Route one west, for example. Which I think was part of the map that you put up, Scott.
Right?
Yeah, yes. Don't don't bring that back up, John? Yeah.
Yeah, I I just, I just think that long-term planning of the town should inform, you know, how we. Think about this.
Yeah, other opinions?
Yeah, I have a, I have a question. It's.
Sure, go ahead.
What? Sorry, what particular items would warrant a special permit? Is it? Is it specific things for each?
So. So basically what we're talking about is when you go through the table for each zone. So basically, what we're talking about is when you go through the table for each zone, you go through the table of allow of allowed uses.
Table five, right?
Right, you go through table five and you go down the line and some of them say special permit and some of them say. And so part of the question is, do we as commission need to do some homework and go through the list and come up with ones that we think should be site plans? Or should it be special permits? Or or not? Is that something that is about?
So but now what you did is you took, if there was any special permit in that column, it just filled in everyone.
So part of that is, so there's two things here at play. It's a question of, does anyone? It is an open question, is there opinions about whether we should be more restrictive or less? Is that, do we feel like it's onerous or not? And then the second question is. Do we want to just go the way that Glenn did it and then we can change it later after the zoning regs have been approved? Or do we change it?
Can we look at table five just to get a feel for what?
Well, I think Ted Ted San said a comment.
Oh, well. You know, I I'm not at all comfortable with this idea that if we combine two districts. The most conservative or the most restrictive. Feature in each district prevails. I I I just think that that's wrong. And I. Looking at some of the changes that were proposed. It struck me that we were overusing the special permit. And there's no question that a special permit. Is expensive and it, you know, it it requires. The kind of professional support. And the kind of financial backing. That some of the local residents are not going to have. And we're in effect. By. Proposing this wholesale switch to special permit. It seems to me that we are favoring. Large, probably out of town developers over our. The the local team. So I I'm I'm uncomfortable with the the assumption that was being made here. And I think that we need to go at this. Case by case.
Thanks, Ted. Any other? Things from commissioners? Mr. Johnson?
I guess I would weigh in that. Site plan changes, for the most part, are going to get approved if they check all the boxes. And that special permit applications, while they may be more expensive, gives the commission a lot more discretion. In terms of what activities are going to be allowed and what aren't.
Yeah, that raises the question, how much? Purview do we want to have or that? You know, do we want to, do we want to have that much purview?
Yeah, if I might, if I could.
I was, yeah, I was just about to throw it to you, Jamie. My question is going to be. If we wanted to do something, would it be a public hearing where we specifically go through each list and and. Allow people to comment as we went through or or how would you propose doing that?
No, I I, well, I mean, I don't think.
We did get some, we did get some notes during the last public hearing that you did.
We did, and I think after I make this point, I I'd like for us to, Glenn did have the comparative use table. And perhaps we can examine the post road business for district. And just have a look at that, but I did want to make kind of a broader comment in this. As to what Sean was saying earlier. You know, in terms of long term planning and thinking about site plan versus special permit. We have identified the Route One corridor as our commercial corridor. It is our our transit oriented development space because we have consistent bus service there. We have public water along Route One. And so Route One was identified in our affordable housing plan as the space to do vertical density and mixed use development. So, you know, if we want to begin to consider certain uses are special permit versus others are site plan. I just offered to the commission. You know, if we're interested in incentivizing perhaps multifamily development. That would be a site plan rather than a special permit. That's the kind of conversation that I would like for the commission to have. Trying to anchor these ideas and sort of long term plans. And efforts. I think that may be more beneficial than saying, you know, in the TS zone, we do daycares via special permit rather than site plan. But that's just my thoughts.
So you're saying that that would be a point of view that would then kind of answer the question as you go through each one of whether it should be.
Right, and I think also, you know, just thinking about if we're interested in treating town center. As a space that is more sort of, you know, walkable. You know, there's there's certain provisions in the business districts that allow for adaptive reuse of existing buildings. And a change in use via an administrative zoning permit. So I think we're we're right on the cusp of of these more kind of comprehensive. Approaches to zoning along Route One, so I'd just like the commission to give some thought to. You know, not Route One as a blanket, you know, from east to west, but it is nuanced. And I know that I have mentioned doing a Route One master plan and that is still in the works. I just think that would roll out.
Jamie, would would Route One master plan be? Route One throughout Guilford or would it be so it would not kind of segregate? Route One West from. Route One, which would kind of encompass. Town Center to Route One East, like. You know, like east of State Street up through the end of Madison.
Yeah, I mean, I think that as a town, we haven't ever done a comprehensive look at Route One. So I think part of the. It's not that it's a hodgepodge, but there's a difference. There seems to be no rhyme or reason to the kind of the.
Yeah, I I I think that I think the. You know, the the, if, not that the end goal is to. Reduce the number of. Zones, which I think is a lot of a goal, but I just think that. If we, maybe we do want to think about. You know, Route One West, whether what about a boundary is. Town Center, Route One to East. Makes some sense, but I think reducing the number of zones.
Sure.
Makes sense.
It sounds to me, Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong, that the.
Which would be, which would be fair to the property owners in each of those.
Right.
You know, general, general areas, not not zone by zone, but general area.
Jamie, it sounds like the thought is to do a comprehensive for the entire Route One. That encompasses a lot of similarities that all of these different parts of Route One might have. But then that's not to say that you can't have individual sections within that plan. That that have maybe not special, but I don't know, specific items for specific areas if you want, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, I think if we look at sort of some of the history of the developments that we have done along Route One. We're seeing a concentration of higher density, mixed use or multifamily residential. From, let's say, Town Center West, right?
So so Glenn, I mean. I mean, you've done some great work for us and and this is. I think in some ways and and hopefully you'll agree with me, this is iterative. I mean, this is progressive. It it is just. You know, we we we're we're taking one step after the other, right?
Yeah, and I think. I think the discussion that George and Aaron and I had with regard to the regulations and and perhaps how the zones might be consolidated was. To spur this kind of exact discussion that the commission is having. And I think that Jamie points out here that if if we had a comprehensive vision, either from a study or, you know, from the P O C D of our. Our desires, objectives and goals for different parts of Route One, then we craft the regulations for that and boom, we'd be off and running. And so. That's the perfect scenario. That wasn't really in what our scope of work was, but I think the idea was, do we, do we need all these zones? Are they doing all what we want them to do or what should we do? So I think one of the, there's a lot on the table for the commission between now and March, right? There's multiple sections of the regulation. I think we can, we can, we can push forward, if you will, in terms of combining zoning districts. Or what we can do is modify the regulations, keep the existing districts intact for now. With the understanding we're going to change many of the other things in the regulations. And set the stage for that kind of analysis going forward, whether it be as part of a a master plan or an overall plan that as Jamie had suggested. Or part of a P O C D process or whatever. So I think maybe the the issue for the commission to discuss is we want to try to. Resolve this in the next six months as we move through to adoption. Or do we want to hold back until we do a more comprehensive study?
Well, that's why I said, that's why I said iterative and and I, you know, I know. But no Matt Hoyt is in the background. I I just. You know, I I just, I I don't want us to do anything that would impede a longer term plan. We can do something that would be in concerned improvement. In the, in the quote unquote, short run. Anything that's how we want to do in the.
Well, Sean, if I could interject quickly, Matt, before you, you might have a comment. I think what Jamie was kind of looking for us from us was, are we interested? There are some overriding or not necessarily orders, but town goals. State streets, for instance, or, you know, affordable housing, goals of housing. Those are things, are we willing as a commission to lean on some of those current town goals and ordinances? And and helping Glenn and Jamie to kind of make some of these distinctions about whether there should be a special permit or or a site plan? Matt, do you have, do we have a comment?
I just, again, I don't want to put the thumb on the scale here, but the the. Process that we entered into with Glenn and his team was very specific, which was to try to consolidate and. And 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 to codify what we have in our zoning code. So, you know, taking from, taking it from twenty business, the business districts to eleven. In my mind's eye, makes an awful lot of sense, whether or not that's what we wind up with eventually as a result of. Some investment in further studies, which I've already committed to Jamie that we're going, we're going to do, we are going to do a Route One corridor study. So again, I'm I'm way over my skis here. This is not my, this is not my bailiff, but if there's an opportunity for us to simplify with reasonability. The the multiple zones that. We have in this community to make it easier for property owners and developers to figure out their way through. What they want to do, I think that makes sense now. You you have to run that up against the larger goals of what do we want this community to look like? What do we want it to be? And I dare say that there are, let's see, the twenty people on this screen, we might have fifteen different visions of what that is, so. I I hate to hate to put it back to you guys, but I think you can start to make some decisions about how do we simplify. Because there's no question in my mind that our zoning code is a mess at this point.
Thanks, Matt.
Right?
Yep. Yep.
Over, over many years.
Appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Freeman?
I think that I'm in kind of in the middle on this. I agree that it's great according to. What Glenn presented and what Matt kind of represented is that we want to narrow the field, so to speak, of choices. That people have to deal with in different modalities of all these distant zones. But I also agree greatly with what Ted said, said, I don't think personally that we should make it more onerous for somebody who's in Zone A. Who now becomes Zone B. I think it should lean the other direction until we get a final. Assessment through the next phase, which is a a study of the entire length of Route One along through Guilford. And then if there are adjustments that need to be made, they'll be made, but I think it would be. Hard on the people that end up on the shorter end of the of the regulation versus the ones who are already there. So I think if we can figure out a way to combine that. By simply just allowing everything to be by by site plan initially, then I I'm pretty comfortable with it.
Uh, Mr. Rosolo?
Yeah, so something Glenn said caught my attention that. Some of these rules. Were made in the past and they probably had a good reason and so we're just going to. Go with them, you know, what's the most restrictive or defaulting to the most restrictive scenario? I think, you know, with this, consistent with this discussion, I think we need to revisit all the. Site plan rules and go through them and did what makes sense ten or twenty years ago still makes sense. And with our new visions, I would disagree with Matt. I think if we have twenty people on the call, we'd have twenty five visions. So so I I think we can't say, well, we're just going to default to this way or or that way. We have to maybe do some historical decision research. Why was this decision made then and does that still make sense now?
I'm so, I'm sorry, Claire Sullivan, I'm not, I know this isn't a public hearing, I just don't know. Are you a representative of someone or?
I own Sullivan Farm Property.
Okay.
So my brother Jim's usually in on the meetings. You have to apologize, I have laryngitis, so. Like this. I just had a question, it's as far as these changes go. Are they going to be retroactive to deals that are already in the works or is this something that? Moving forward?
As stated, the the plan was to not make any changes that were going to change anything that had happened in the past.
So if a deal is currently in process or, you know, getting reviewed?
Correct.
Okay.
Nothing, the, all these change, anything that was put in had no effect on. Well, they made sure that no effect was going to happen on anything that happened in the past.
When will it go into effect?
As soon as we get public to get behind.
What's your expectation of timing?
March, March is when we're trying to vote on this.
Thank you.
Thanks. So Jamie and Glenn, I think it sounds like there's, well, I mean, we've kind of touched both sides. Of wanting to be super involved in deciding what's the site plan and what's a special permit versus going with the discretion. How would you kind of suggest that we proceed from here?
Mr. Chairman, I think. Glenn had his hand up a minute ago.
Yep.
He was looking to make a. Jamie, is that all right if I jump in?
Yes.
I think. I think anytime we make zoning changes on property, particularly on all of business properties in in Guilford, we ought to do it with the reasoned approach. I'm excited for Guilford in the senses, people have mentioned here and Matt also mentioned that. There may be the opportunity to do a Route One study. And I think that we can modify our regulations by sort of thinking about what we did years ago and cross checking and everything else. And I'm actually a bigger fan of possibly a comprehensive analysis of Route One and say, listen. In this economy, in this day and time, given the opportunities that exist in the world. What should our vision be for Route One and then craft the regulations to do that? So rather than, you know, hire ourselves to the past, let's hire ourselves what our vision is for the future. And I wouldn't encourage the commission to do regulation changes. In multiple steps for something like this. In other words, if I'm a business property owner, I've got my current zone, then I'd have an interim zone and then another zone. I think the idea, my suggestion for your consideration would be to. Maybe we we go through to March with the zones that we have in place. We park this concept of how the zones could be combined for a future analysis or Route One. We park this concept of how the zones could be combined for a future analysis or Route One study. And then that can be packed up and moved forward at some time. The way that this section of the regulations has been configured. That each of the zones is independent and has links out to the other things that are relevant to it. But, but they can exist independently or um, and be combined as, as appropriate, that. We have a good basic framework for the regulation, so that framework will serve the, the commission well, uh, whatever you decide to do with zones. So, as I think about the amount of time that might be required over the next six months to get this right. I think that it might actually make more sense to continue to work with the zones we have, recognize that this is perhaps. One of the next big projects of the commission and, and move ahead, so that's, that's, I guess, my, my observation for your consideration.
Uh, just Glenn, um, would you have any advice um, or perspective on? How best, maybe based on, you know, uh, what other towns have done. Not necessarily to, not that we would dissuade more input, but that we would. Educate the public about what we're doing, I mean, how it. Is it letters to the editor, is it, it just, are there more public hearings, just? Um, I, I just think that we don't want to spring something on the public. Um, that, that's the thing that I just. The most concerned about is, is. Um, people don't pay attention.
Yep.
Until.
But I, I'm excited more for a thoughtful planning process for Route One. Guilford has adopted some good regulations over the years, or the, their studies of different sections of Route One. Um, but we've ended up with twenty different business zones. And in this day and age, with the way the economy is working and what we sort of anticipate for the future, that's probably, it could be holding Guilford back. So I think a thoughtful planning process. For the community has the opportunity to participate. Um, would clarify our vision for Route One and say, listen, you know, um. The Guilford Green area is, is a unique. Area within, within the state, um, that's gonna have its own special type of. There's other parts of Route One where we have, you know. The, the shopping centers that we're, we're gonna treat those a little bit differently and then sort of State Street or other things, but we're gonna. We're gonna go through that as a comprehensive perspective. Um, and get a set of regulations that give us the greatest chances to succeed in the future, I think, I think. I think that sounds like uh, a good path forward.
Okay, so the, that being said, we have, Jamie and, and others have put a lot of time into coming up with the eleven. And actually, we've had public hearings based off of it as well, so I think the question for the commission really. Sounds like that you're proposing, Glenn, is that we should kind of decide, are we gonna stick with the twenty, go to the eleven? Um, and if we go to the eleven, do we say that? Do we give some direction to Jamie or some discretion to Jamie to decide whether something should be a site plan or a special permit? Or do we, as Glenn's suggesting, we stick with the twenty, Matt, I saw you had a comment.
Right, I, I, I know the introduction of the Route One uh, corridor. Study is a uh, a, you know, a monkey wrench. Uh, thrown into what the original objectives for this project, this, this initiative was. But so I, I have to go back to what, what, what did we, what did we think the eventual outcome was gonna be on this project? Was it gonna be some consolidation and some kind of uh, you know, codification and consolidation, so. Are we admitting at this point that the introduction of the quarter study suggests that we should not do something? That we had anticipated doing uh, when we entered into the process that we are currently reviewing.
Uh, commissioners, do you have a point of view on that in either direction?
It sounds like, it sounds like there's a suggestion that we're pointing something that we thought we were gonna do. But the reason we're doing that is because we have introduced a new variable to the situation.
Understood, understood, at, at the same, at the same time, the. The changes aren't significant either, and it actually would make, it, it does, as you say, uh, does complete the original mission of the. Of the rewrite, but yeah, I, I don't necessarily have an opinion in either direction, but.
That's right.
If you decide what we're gonna do.
I, if we, I, I just don't want to do anything that would impede um, a longer term comprehensive. Approach that would influence when we revisit it. Later on.
Okay, so you, you'd be in favor of just going with, remaining with the twenty that we have? Sean?
Uh, I, I, I would love to see us maybe. Um, considered. Um. You know, break conscious consolidation, maybe possibly limited, but I think. If.
Which, again, uh, Jamie's put a lot of work into it and, and had, I mean, Jamie, do you want to speak to it, I mean. What, what you've done to this point is not extensive changes.
Well, no, I, I, yeah, I guess I want to impress upon the commission that, you know, I love what Glenn is saying and I really do. Believe in it, and I think that's why I've been pushing the Route One Corridor Study, I think since day one in the chair, but. Um, the consolidation of the multiple business zones themselves, I think is. Very much in line with the original intent of this endeavor, which was to make the zoning regulations. Uh, you know, give them better organization, make them easier to use, simplify them. And I think it does that, where we get into a few. That, that, there's a little bit of detail, particularly in this movement towards perhaps permitting things in a more conservative way. That I view as maybe a, a, a secondary thing that the commission may want to consider, so I. Am very supportive of the consolidation, I do not think that consolidating the loans or. The uh, zones right now would prohibit us from, you know, doing a, a, a vision based set of regulations in the future. For what comes out of the Route One Corridor Study, uh, so I, I, I almost want to split the difference here. And, and ask, um, perhaps we consider, um, you know, if it was either a. For example, if in some of our consolidations of zones. Uh, there was a site plan, a permitted use fee and site plan, I would uh, ask the commission to consider. Uh, keeping it site plan rather than the movement to special permit.
I think that makes sense.
Movement towards special permit is getting into this space of the, the comprehensive. Planning of Route One, so I'm, I view it as stepwise, um, but yeah.
Jamie, having been through it and having gone through it with the public hearing part of, portion of that, do you feel like there's a, a limited enough? Of these conflicts, let's call them, um, that you could just create a narrative and send it to us that we could just. Kind of check through our opinion on each one?
Yeah, I mean, I think so, it is, so just to, not to be exhaustive about this, but just to think about it a little bit differently. You know, again, with daycares, I think there's a couple of zones where daycares are a special permit versus site plan. And the, the treating them differently at, at different parts of Route One. Says to me that there is a comprehensive plan for Route One, but we don't actually have a comprehensive plan for one, so. You know, but I think that uh, consolidation of zones and then a uh, um, kind of standardization of how we. Permit uses for now, uh, it is a good, is a good step forward. Um, and then in the future, after we complete a, a corridor plan, you know, I, I think we can. Um, have some more nuanced conversations about uh, what type of development we would like to see. Uh, and I, you know, I hate to leave out um, our industrial zones, you know, I've said this before, we have actually quite a bit of industrially. Zone space uh, in town and, you know. The Route One Corridor Plan would most likely dovetail with an economic development plan, it would give us an opportunity. To look at our industrial zones, uh, and their best and highest uses.
Yeah. Okay. Any last comments, Mr. Sands?
Well, but you know, we're, we're still dealing with the issue that. The proposal on the table or what has been the proposal is. That if we combine two districts, we take the most restrictive feature of each district and impose it. On the other district.
Yep.
And I think that that's a mistake. Well, I, I think that. We, we, we just, if we're gonna do consolidations. I think we need to say if it's permitted in one area and we consolidate two zones. Then it should be permitted in both areas. And I, I just, cause I, 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 this creeping uh, of everything has to be special permit. Is, is really going to um, make for a very difficult. Playing field for uh, the non-national uh, developers.
Yep, so I think that's what I was suggesting to Jamie, I, I don't know if you want to ballpark it, Jamie, but is there what, like twenty? Places where there's a conflict like this, and is it possible to just do a quick narrative that you could send out? And we could.
Yeah, I actually don't think it, I don't think it's that.
Might not be that many.
Yeah.
Um, so that, I think this is just, I think your point is well taken, Ted, Ted, is that everybody, it seems to me from the rest of the commission feels similarly to you. That it shouldn't just be a blanket decision, um, but I, I think from having sat through Jamie's presentation, there's not as many conflicts. As it might seem, um, so that, that thought, if you think it's reasonable, Jamie, that we could just. Go through the comments in some sort of forum at some point down the line. Um, then that might be a way to kind of split the difference on this one.
Yeah, I think it would actually be quite, quite good to get the details, like, for example, I have alluded to the new Post-Road Business Four District earlier. Which is the consolidation of the C D District and the T S Three District, and you know, there's some. You know, this raises some question about um. Really, if we look at it. You know, retail facilities of.
Is it just me? Or do you look? Pardon me?
Sorry.
Uh, you know, I think, yeah, actually pulling out the details uh, may make it a little less um. You know, uh, thing, so I don't think it would be that arduous, if I get into it next weekend, it seems like a Herculean task, I'll let.
Right, then we can reconsider, correct. Is that, I'm seeing a lot of shake, people shaking hands, I feel like that's, that's a good way to progress. Okay.
Yeah, great.
So if I may, Scott, I think.
Yeah.
This is great feedback from the commission here, because I think that certainly, having been involved in the regulations. Weren't quite sure what the commission's thoughts or feedback were gonna be, so it sense the commission's leaning towards consolidation. I pledge to work with Jamie to help uh, identify and resolve these issues, to try to give the commission just a. Plain understanding of the changes that would be made, um, and we'll move in that direction as we head towards March.
The other advantage, Jamie, to having a narrative like this would be that easy, easily explainable to the, to the township about. A very cut and dry, the only things that were in conflict when we made these uh, consolidations. I know we already did once in this, in that one public forum, but it'll be, have it easily explainable to anyone.
Uh, I think repetition is a virtue in this regard.
Agreed, yep, absolutely.
Is absolutely.
Yep, absolutely.
Scott, can I?
Yep.
Can I just raise one question, I know Jamie has referenced it. The Route One Corridor Study is not the end-all and be-all, there are commercial zones that are not part of Route One Corridor. Um, how do we accommodate those areas? Jamie, maybe?
Um, yeah, I mean, again, uh, this is, you know, getting to um, my reference to the industrial zones as well. Um, I think the way that we're talking about these twenty-two zones, uh, there might be a tendency to just refer to zones along Route One. Uh, but there are other areas, so I think we could similarly, um. You know, but, but, but at the same time, uh, Matt, I do feel like there are. Larger planning strategies that are emerging, I mean, the application that we just looked at. There seems to be in our industrial zone, north of uh, ninety-five along seventy-seven. There seems to be a movement towards medical office and uh, you know, complexes, so there are these kind of emerging. Uh, things that we're seeing, so again, I feel like the corridor study wouldn't have to just look at. Route One and could look at the connections across Route One as well.
I, I, I agree and focus on every single route, you know, Goose Lane. Um, Route seventy-seven and, and um, Route One, which, you know, cross. Ninety-five, all those exits.
Yeah, and then the interplay between Town Center, which is, you know, also our historic district. Commercial area as well, and that play off of Route One.
Right, I would, I would respectfully ask the commission that, uh, as Jamie and I go forward. With uh, trying to secure funding from the Board of Finance for these various studies that. We would have your support in that, in those endeavors.
Yep.
Thank you.
And, and Jamie, I know, in the past, we had a planning committee and we also had a zoning committee and, and perhaps we could look at, once the zoning rights have been up. We could look into maybe revitalizing those committees and helping. Cause there's gonna be new things being proposed and those are the proper place for those, those discussions to start, right, and then they would come to us.
Yeah, and I'd also like to bring, I, I still see that Wendy is, is on the call, I mean. There, there, I would like to bring the Economic Development Commission into the.
Absolutely.
You know, again, I think, you know, it's a, it's a testament to all the very, very good work that's been done on the zoning regulations already. Uh, if we can just kind of make that little iterative tweak and, you know, get them passed and then can continue to build off of it.
Yep, agreed. Thanks, uh, so what was the next item that you wanted to go over?
Uh, thank you, Scott, I think um. The next issue here was sort of a discussion about planned development districts, let me get through the business part, talk a little bit about planned development districts. This is a different type of zoning districts, um, and I think it's a combination of sort of two things that. Planning and zoning commissions often want. One of which is, is it gives you uh, uh, the specificity of a master plan or a site plan. In terms of a particular development, but it also gives the commission the discretion of a zone change. So, we have a scenario here where a planned development district can be used as a way to promote. Uh, new types of development, flexible types of developments in appropriate areas of the community. It doesn't really fit in with our current zoning configuration or current zoning districts. And it allows for a one-off site plan um, for a unique situation or circumstance or site. So, it gives the commission a tremendous amount of flexibility. But it also gives the commission a tremendous amount of discretion because it is a zone change. If you don't like the zone change, you don't have to approve it, it's what's known in land use laws, a legislative act. Which is unlike a site plan, which is an administrative approval or a special permit. The zone change has much more power and authority, so this regulation has been used in communities around the state. Um, it's becoming more popular, um, and as part of our work uh, with George and Aaron, we decided to. Propose this for the commission's review and consideration. The purpose is outlined here, which is enabling development and redevelopment in accordance with an overall master plan for a site. Be flexible, promote economic development, um, and also promote good design. We're crafting this regulation, um, we put in this section here with regard to uh, eligibility. And what it says right here is that a P D D can only be cited where it's recommended in the P O C D. Now, this is a little bit like belt and suspenders, all right, you have a zone change, but. The process here basically says for an applicant, you have to get the P O C D amended first. It recognizes areas of sight for it, and then you gotta come back for the zone change. I just want to point out in our discussion here tonight, that this entire section may not. I just wanna point out in our discussion here tonight that this entire section may not be necessary. The commission may feel comfortable with the tool, feel that you have enough discretion, and you may not want to put particular limitations on it. So that's something for your consideration. Also, as you see here, preliminary discussions encouraged.
Can, can you give us an example of what might be proposed that you've seen other towns that might? Come before us if we were to adopt, adopt this?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, uh, some of the creative ones that dealt with the situation in another municipality where they had an old industrial mill building. Um, that time had passed by. Um, and they kept writing regulations to promote uses of the site. But the uses that they wrote into the regulation was not what the market wanted to do. And so each side felt that the other side wasn't really listening to the situation. The developers and property owners and other people excited about the prospects of redeveloping this mill felt the town was. Missing a huge opportunity with this particular site. And the town felt that developers didn't love them cuz they were just writing these new regulations for the mill complex. And so the P D D is an approach where the developer came in and proposed a mixed-use redevelopment of the site. In what the market would support, and after reviewing discussions with the town, became the common ground and they hadn't approved the development.
Would, 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 would we anticipate having a site that would be? You know, that would come before us that would be like that?
So if you, if you think back to some of that, this would be the case for a lot of those, those folks that have come to us for a zoning change. Because they had a specific project in mind, but we decided to not change the zone because of all the other possibilities. This would be a tool that those folks could use to actually provide, to actually go through with that one single project. That we were perfectly happy with the project, but we were scared about making in a full-on zone change. That's what it was for.
So this is what, this is what we explicitly discussed when the bishops came before us. And this would allow them to come with their plant, same plan essentially and say, this is what we're gonna do. And then we'd feel comfortable that that's what they're gonna do.
Would actually tie the plan.
To them.
Right, and so, you know, if you made a, a, a change to the plan as to what was put forward, it would basically nullify the.
The zone change.
Right.
Yep. But my one question for Glenn is, is this other uh five A B sort of an extra step that we don't necessarily need?
Yes.
Yeah, I think, I thought the idea was it came sort of as a cohesive package of a, of a plot, of a plan and a zone change.
Yeah.
Specific to that plan, and that was it. And that's a one-step process.
And this language came from another municipality that um had separate planning and zoning commissions. So the planning commission didn't wanna be left out of this process. So they advocated for this to be put in. Since you guys are one end the same. You can quickly recognize whether it's an appropriate site for the intended use. And as you pointed out, uh, Scott, I think it's a situation that a specific plan gets approved. And so there is no bait and switch going on in terms of showing one thing and then coming in later. Zone has been changed to something entirely different.
But Glenn, is this, is this, is this in effect giving the, the P and Z in Guilford more discretion or not?
Yes.
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 It is.
Mr. Howie.
Uh, Jamie, uh, I hate to put you on this spot, but uh you and I both had some conversations recently. Uh, with uh some developers about the potential for uh what, what would seem to be a P D D. Um, are you comfortable talking about uh that, that, those most recent conversations?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I, I wanna uh keep, keep confidence, um, you know, and not disclose any details. But I can say that, uh, you know, there are uh proposals out there which are seeking to do, you know. A use table amendment, a map amendment, a variance, two variances, you know, and it just seems like the. You know, my, I actually said to the applicants, I said, hey, you know, can you just wait till March? Because we've got this planned development district that I think, you know, rather than going through all of those.
Yeah.
Steps to try to make it work. Um, but I, but, you know, I also do know from some of these conversations. And Glenn, I'd like for you to walk us through kind of the stepwise uh manner in which a P D D would. Come before the commission because I know that, um, you know, this, this kind of dance of, um. The, the commission gets to feel some security because. The site plan and the zone change are essentially coming together uh at, at one moment. But the developer uh should also feel some security that as they continue to, you know. Do work on their site or do costly unhearing activities, um, that, that the commission is, you know. Uh, um, looking favorably at what they're about to put forward. I just want the commission to understand that there is. Uh, both, both of that kind of push and pull a little bit, that opportunity, although things are coming in one pack. It's a little bit more set, uh, stepwise than that.
Yeah, so let me just walk through the pages. It's not particularly complicated, but I think you'll get a chance to see how. The different provisions tie to each other. So let me just keep going here for a second. Um, what we'd say to a potential applicant is you have to submit three applications to the commission. One is your master plan. You need to show us what it is that you're planning on developing. It doesn't necessarily need to be the same as a uh detailed site plan, invert elevations and all of the other stuff. It could be conceptual plan, which would be much more cost-effective to develop this concept. To explain to the commission what is being intended, but it's enough uh definition that everybody is on the same page. There's also a tax amendment application that comes in. I'll come back to that in a moment, and a zoning amendment application. Um, and then once, or if those are all approved, you can see here in step four. Actual development can only occur with the site plan approval later. So we get the conceptual approval in three A, B, and C. And then the actual detailed site plan for construction occurs in four.
Uh, Glenn, can I just interject? The, 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 this seemed to connote to me something large. I'm not sure what that, you know, that means, but it's something large.
Doesn't have to be. It's something different than what the current regulations define. As Jamie pointed out. You can have a situation where variances are required for what may be a remarkable concept.
Okay.
Because it's not covered in your current regs, the variance is required, which now brings Z B A into the next. This is a situation where the commission can review an application on its merits, like, you know, whether they think that makes sense or not.
Okay. Glenn, I have a question on number four. What would be? I, I guess I worry a little bit that, that, you know, you go through all A, B, and C, and then you get to four and somehow. They don't approve it as a, as a, as a, as, what would be the things that would be stumbling blocks at that point that might? dissuade the commission?
I think the difference built between three A and four is the scale and detail of the drawings. I might do a conceptual master plan at a hundred scale to show the basic layout of buildings and parking and buffers. And show you some architectural elevations and everything else. And I don't have to spend a hundred thousand dollars developing my plans to have you tell me enough. That I could perhaps for ten or fifteen thousand dollars and you'd say, you know what? Uh, you're gonna have to tweak this or change that. And then later on, I come in in four and get the detailed approval to build. So four is verification of three A. So you're following through with what you showed us.
So once you get to four, you're basically, as long as you're following the, you know, the storm water management. Radius is all the various things. It's just at a more fine detail and then, then they, okay.
Correct. This page here just simply shows some of the requirements for the master plan. You have to um identify the, the uses that are being proposed, the way it's configured, schematic architectural drawing. So we see what it looks like, data tables, so we understand its intensity. Additional documentation in terms of traffic studies or adequacy of utility services and consistency with the P O C D and, and other things. Those basic application packages intended to give you a fairly full picture of what's being proposed. The way the application gets processed is this, if I was an applicant appearing before the commission. I would have three applications on the table, but the first thing I would talk about is my master plan and what my vision is for the site. And if the commission were to come to the conclusion that we like this master plan, we are inclined to move ahead. They would first approve the, or act on the master plan. If they approve the master plan, then they can go ahead and approve the tax amendment. Now, the tax amendment is the drawings that the applicant submitted. It's not text or pages or paragraphs, as you might anticipate. It is the drawings that the applicant submitted. And that's what locks down the application. You showed us this, we approved this, that's what it is. The reason that there's also a zone change application is because the zoning map would be changed to be P D D number one. And then later on, it would be P D D number two in a different location or P D D number three. But those notations on the zoning map all tied back, the maps would turn file at town hall to show you specifically what's approved at that site. So it's not like they're reacting to words. They're proposing the pictures that explain it all, and that becomes the regulation.
Um, Glenn, is this typically done over the course of one meeting, over the course of two planning and zoning meetings? What's the typical timeframe?
On the, on the scale of the application, Scott, I mean, it could be something which is different than what you might have in Guilford today. Or what is currently allowed in the zoning district, but then you may look at the site and say, that's a perfect blend for that site. So for the commission to wrap a tad around what this is. All three applications would generally be on the agenda. They travel through together. Because that's the way the process is going to end up working. Um, it, if it was a simple thing, it might take one meeting. But my, my, it's the type of thing that probably take a couple of meetings just for the commission to feel comfortable with what they were doing.
But it would fall under the same stipulations that we have to make a decision with a certain amount of days.
Yes, absolutely. Yep. Those statutory timeframes will still be in effect. So that's how the application gets processed. The effect of the approval um is to uh treat the master plan materials. As a distinct part of the text of the regulation. So again, maps, the drawings, the plans. Just as you saw here tonight, for example, for the fire department. If that was a P D D, that drawing is gonna go on file, and that's what we approved to build, and that's what you're gonna build. Um, and then uh again, the zoning map would be notated as P D D number one. Eventually, you would then come in for a site plan approval to go ahead and build it. The regulation, the way it's currently crafted here, it says, look, if the site plan isn't submitted within two years of the effective date, you've parked your approval. And you've gotta come back to us and uh ask for a possible extension of time. Other, we had, otherwise, we, the town, have the ability to modify that, that zone change and text amendment and take that back. So this is not meant to be a situation where the zone change or the, the project gets parked or banked or sold. The issue is, you know what, we're, we're looking for action on this. And the same thing also falls through with construction improvements. Is that uh it's our intention and hopefully yours as well, that, that you're gonna move ahead with construction. If there should be uh, you know, uh, economic changes, et cetera, somebody can request an extension, the commission can consider that. And then we have section here um on future modifications. Um, that if it's a minor modification, we're gonna tilt the building a couple of feet or we're gonna, you know, move some trees around or whatever. That's a simple and straightforward thing, and that can be handled like a site plan. If on the other hand, you want to break a building into two, you want to relocate the parking lot. You wanna do something which is fundamentally altering the characteristics of the plan, that's essentially the same as a new. Excuse me, text amendment in zone game process. So at that point in time, you, you certainly, you, you can propose modifications to the plan based on, you know, other things. But we're turning from tragedy to make sure that that's uh consistent with what we envision. So it's a flexible approach and possibility, but it also can lock it down. So that, as Scott indicated earlier, that's uh what it is and, and what we've approved uh overall. So that's the uh basic approach to a P D D. If you have any questions, happy to chime in, respond.
Thanks, Glenn. Um. I mean, I'm for this for sure. I, I think this would really help alleviate a lot of things and actually promote a lot of, of great projects that we. Have been wanting to see and would, would continue to see. Um, I think somewhat, uh. The eligibility question about whether or not they should be within the P O, the P O C. Um. I think that's another example of what we were talking about earlier would be that if, if our town has engaged in a lot, a little bit more planning. Then that would really what, that would kind of be the, the, the um. That would kind of be the, the thing that limits us in terms of just approving everything versus not approving everything, right? Um, I think that would be a concern. I think, I don't know if Sean, some, someone raised that the concern is, well, what stops us from just approving everything? Does that give us too much power? Um, and my thought is that I think we heard today that the town is invested in kind of doing some more. Big-term planning, and that would really be the thing that kind of helps us to make those decisions going forward.
Yeah, my, my only point, Scott, and I, I, I appreciate that is, is that I don't wanna get the commission. In, in terms of um any regulation changes ahead of something that's doing more comprehensive.
Yeah. Agreed, a hundred percent. Yeah, I, I think that's, and you know, we've heard from both Jamie and Matt that that's, that's definitely something that they're um. Gonna be pushing forward.
You know, I, I, I just have to make an aside comment. I, I, Jamie, um, you have to be awfully lonely in there. I know. I'm trying to make a point to join you sometime soon.
Um, any other comments or commissioners about P D Ds for against?
Or, I think, I think it would give, you know, us as a commission the ability to approve more things.
And it gives the public the ability to make more creative decisions.
Well, yeah, approve, approve or not approve, but at least think through the project and not have to worry.
But, but.
I mean, how many times have we said if we approve this, you could put a dry cleaner in when you've told us you're gonna put this?
No, but, but, but I, I, I think, you know, I think. Oftentimes, we're thinking about it from our point of view, and I know we've talked about this, but I think we have to talk more about. The point of view of the, um, the end users of our regulations. And I think that this gives them, um, that there's, there's never gonna be any certainty. But it'll give them a little bit more. Visibility into what is possible.
Yeah.
And I thi- I think that, and, and if it fits with the, um, the long-term vision for the town. You know, there are lots of people who are in the development field. Who are visionaries and who think outside the box and who can think in terms of what is really good in every respect of the word. And I, I think that we, we should be um thinking about that and not trying to prevent. The things that, uh, you know, bad people can do, but enable the things that good people can do.
Yep. Yep. Mr. Chairman, I, I, I would agree with what Sean said, but I also think it gives developers and creative people the opportunity. To present things that are not already contemplated in any of the town planning efforts.
I, I agree.
Okay, um, we're not, we're, we're on the corner on smarts. And it's gonna take us a while to put together uh as many of these studies as is possible. Um, and so the, the, the fact that we may not have accommodated uh everybody in our planning. Uh, this is a great tool to allow them to uh not circumvent the planning, but to augment uh the planning efforts. And uh, and, and potential development in town.
Yeah, and I, I would just say, not that we wanna overdevelop Guilford, but to the extent that we can, um. You know, provide an example. And, and, you know, be a beacon, um, not that we're gonna prove everything that might come under provision. But to show the development community that we're open. You know, we're not open for everything, but we're open to ideas, and that's.
Yeah.
Ideas.
Not to get off on a tangent, but it does, it's one thing that I've thought of in the past is we've never really heard testimony in any sort of a project from, you know, from our our economic directors or any of that sort of thing. And I don't know if that's just, they're not allowed to, or you know, I think if we are getting into this PDD, then we might need to look into what is where are we getting our recommendations from? Do we ask the board of selectmen for a recommendation on a certain project? Like, you know what I mean? Like, I don't know what the regulations are, but we might need some more input than just from our town planning staff. Matt, do you have, do you have any?
Yeah, Scott, Scott, you bring up an excellent point. Jamie, myself, and our economic development coordinator actually had a meeting less than two months ago, perhaps, about whether or not she should weigh in on a proposal in front of planning and zoning. I have always erred on the side of not putting the thumb on, you know, the administration, not putting the thumb on the scale. That's that's why planning and zoning is an independent organization. So I have, in the five years I've been here, I have been reluctant to allow the planning and zoning development person to weigh in and testify. I wasn't always successful in that earlier on.
The big guy did speak up every now and then, didn't he?
Yes, every, but my good friend Brian McLoane did occasionally speak up. You're absolutely right. But one of the other conversations Jamie and I have had, and if you haven't figured it out, I am so pleased to have Jamie on the staff, is that we are about to enter into some discussions with our economic development coordinator on putting together an economic development plan that I don't think has been contemplated or updated in over twenty years. So that's a companion planning document that you guys may be able to take advantage of in some of your deliberations going forward. Assuming we can get that done in the next couple of years.
Great, that'd be really helpful, I think. Okay, glad I'm gonna throw it back to you, because, you know, like, I don't know, trying to get on tangents here, but it seems like this is an affirmative that that everybody's pretty happy with this. I didn't hear any, any even word changes that people are looking for, so.
Just that I don't necessarily want it to be that two-step process if we can
Yeah, it sounds like we're all fine with taking out that eligibility requirement.
I agree with that, Bill. And and Glenn, I hope, I hope this has been informative and exhaustive.
Exhausting or exhaustive, I mean. I let me just say that I think the PDD regulation is something that we can go ahead and make that change for, leave it in the regulations for August. If it is something the commission sees an opportunity for in a shorter term, it is its own separate module and could be integrated in your current reg. So March is what, roughly six months away or whatever. So depending on what's happening, it is, has the potential to be a self-contained module. So I'll work with Jamie on this.
Yeah, I'd leave that to people that know more about our public face of things to make that decision.
And I'll work with Jamie on that. So thank you, everybody. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, that not to extend, but I did want to ensure that any members that are joining us from the public, if they have any clarifying questions or feedback they want to give us of what we've what we've been discussing.
Yeah, please give our regrets to Mr. Eisenhoff. I know that he was on, but we were trying to streamline things a little bit in that discussion. Wendy, did you have something you wanted?
I just have a quick question about the PDD, and that is the emphasis that will be put on the project conforming with your, what is it, POCD or whatever you call it here. I sat on a planning board for four years in New Jersey, and we had a a program or regulation that allowed anyone to come in and propose a change to the master plan. And what that meant is we got big developers, not the local people. The big developers who could handle all the requirements to do that, who came in, and, you know, we felt a lot of pressure. We were worried about being arbitrary and capricious, you know, it was, it was really probably not a good decision the way it was structured. So I think as long as, you know, there's a strict adherence to your plans, that any, you know, that that is really emphasized. And also that you understand that maybe some of the smaller guys won't be able to conform to all those requirements. That's it.
Sure.
My thought is by taking out the the first section B, we're gonna get away from this requirement. You have to demonstrate consistency with the POCD, because I think, as you point out, Wendy, that would, you know, bigger people would propose an amendment to the POCD. But it is crafted as a zone change and a text change, which are legislative acts of the commission. And your your mission attorney will tell you that you don't get any more discretion under Connecticut State Land Use Law than you do on a zone change so that if you doesn't look or feel right, you don't think it's right for Guilford, you can turn it down. You don't have to have extensive justification as you might on a special permit or other type of approach. But I think the beauty of this process is it gives you the detail of the master plan. You see what you're going to get upfront. But also the discretion and control of a zone change and a text change, a legislative act. And I I think I'm quite comfortable recommending it to you and other towns for your consideration.
Thanks, thank you. Thank you, Wendy, for your comment. That was great. But not seeing any other unmutes or or hands raised. So Jamie, should we move on to approval minutes and then?
Yes, and thank you so much, Glenn. Thank you for your
Thank you, Glenn. Appreciate it. Been able to review the minutes. I wanna make a motion.
Take a motion to approve the minutes is substantially correct.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sean. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All abstained? Passes unanimously. Any other items, Jamie, before we adjourn?
No, sir.
An entertaining motion of adjournment. Yeah, we have Ted Sands gets the, who's got the second? Who's got it? I go to Bill Freeman, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Please, appreciate it. I think that was
Good job, Scott.
Hey.
Good job, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you.